Welcome to the June 13, 2024 in-depth council meeting. Cindy, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Lampy?
Here.
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 Present.
Councilmember Lewis?
Present.
Councilmember McConner?
Present.
Seven present, two absent. Thank you. Can we stand to say the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started tonight, I would like to ask to have Item D discussion regarding the mobile pay parking option in Muscatine Downtown Business District to be pulled and be put back on the July 11 meeting. Is there any objections to that?
No.
None.
Pardon me?
You're good.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and pull that then, and that'll be then put on the July 11 meeting. So to start off with, we're going to have the riverboat stop update. And we'll let her come up and explain.
Hello, everybody. My name's Rebecca Paulson. I am the Vice President of Operations and Tourism at the Greater Muscatine Chamber of Commerce and Industry. Thank you for letting me come and update you guys on the boats this summer that are going to be coming through. As you, just I guess as a quick reminder, last year we had three boat stops from American Queen Voyages. That was our first really official cruise company that we had a signed partnership with. They unfortunately declared bankruptcy a few months ago and have sold their boats off, all three of which were acquired by American Cruise Lines. However, two out of the three are in the scrapyard and the American Queen herself. There has been no update on that, so God save the Queen. But she may not be saved, so we can hope. So this year, we are working with American Cruise Lines, which is a contact that I've had been working on and working through, trying to get them to come to Muscatine for probably 18 months or so. It's been quite a while that I've been courting them. And so they have agreed to come for 10 dates this summer, starting this upcoming Monday. They have three different boats, the American Melody, American Serenade, and American Symphony that will be stopping in Muscatine. Last year, the three boats that came all came on Sundays. I'm pleased to report that we have no Sunday stops. We do have a Monday stop, a couple Mondays, Tuesdays, a lot of Saturdays. And I can go through the dates that we have here. And so these are the dates that they will be here. As you're aware, because I know you guys signed off on this, they will be here docking July 4. And so just to let you know, they are fully aware of the concerns that have been expressed about blocking any views of the Fourth of July fireworks. They will be coming in earlier than normal. They are always coming upriver when they come to Muscatine, so they will just not come up all the way. They'll stay down out of any sort of view blocking of the fireworks, so that way their guests can enjoy the fireworks in Muscatine. So that's really exciting. So this first trip is coming up Monday. It is a 21-day cruise. So they do cruises that are up and down. You can do a cruise that starts in Red Wing, Minnesota, goes down to the Gulf Coast and back, which is what this cruise is. You can do an Upper Mississippi, a Lower Mississippi, or a one-way. So there's a couple of different options. So this one is a little bit lower attendance at 80 guests only. Their maximum capacity is 175. So typically with the longer cruises like that, they do have a little bit lower occupancy. As of earlier this week, so they sent me an email with what the guests are going to be doing and who has signed up. So real quick, there's three primary attractions that the boats are going to go to, and they will do the same thing all 10 times that they come here. They're going to dock the night before. In the morning, they will have three motor coaches that they possibly four, but it'll usually be three motor coaches that they will have that follows them up and down the river. One motor coach will be going to Pine Creek Grist Mill as part of a premium experience. So similar to a cruise that you would be going to like in the Caribbean or somewhere else with like Carnival cruises or a big cruise line, you have kind of the stops that are included with your ticket price, and then there's premium experiences. So the premium experiences are Pine Creek Grist Mill. You can do a tour at Stanley Center for Peace and Security, which four people have signed up for, and you can do golf at Geneva Country Club and have lunch there. And they have one person signed up for that. And if I didn't mention it earlier, 22 people have signed up to go to the Grist Mill. So the primary attractions, which are included in their ticket, is called the Local Loop. They get on a coach bus. They're going to ride this loop. The loop never changes. It's always the same. They're going to start out with going to the Environmental Learning Center. Then they'll have an opportunity to get off at the Art Center, and they will end at the National Pearl Button Museum downtown. The benefit to this, which is actually an opposite route compared to last year, is that they'll be ending downtown. So as they have free time, they can either walk back to the boat, since it's walking distance, which they love, or just spend time downtown shopping. So that gives them a little bit more of a relaxed schedule where instead of, you know, having to end at the Art Center and get downtown, or get back to the boat. So as of today, as far as I know, the numbers may change. 64 of the 80 guests will be participating in one of these activities, which is probably higher than normal. They say usually it's like 50% of the guests will get off the boat. And that may change. Depending on the weather, if it's nice out, they, people may get on the buses and go downtown or stop at these, the Local Loop. And what else? So the night before, this is why I have this gold button. I have worked out arrangements with Musco and MPW to board their boat the night before. So they're going to come in 9:30, 10 o'clock. I'll go on the boat and allow one of their guests to hit the ceremonial button and turn on the bridge lights. So this is a really fun opportunity for them. They're pumping it up. So this may be someone, if it's someone's birthday, they're going to determine who the guest is, whether it's someone's birthday or maybe the person that has cruised with them the most, taken the most different cruises. Because people will cruise with this company different times, or even do the same cruise more than once. So this is the ceremonial button that they'll push. I have access to the bridge lights from my phone, which is super fun. I feel very special about that. Thank you, MPW and Musco. I feel very, you know, like, wow, I'm one of like, only three people that can do that in town. And so I'll push the button on my phone, and they'll get to ceremonially light the bridge lights. So I'm really excited about that. So I've committed to doing that all summer long, which is just fine. And then this upcoming Monday, when they stop, I would like to invite you all to our ribbon cutting. It's going to be at 8:45. I have invited their guests to be able to participate if they would like, or just witness a ribbon cutting, you know, based on their level of interest in that. And then myself, along with a few other people, Angie's filling in as Vice Mayor for Brad since he won't be there, are going to be dining with their executives and their contacts on the boat in the morning. So that'll be a lot of fun. Peggy, thank you very much. She's offered to come down for most of the dates and provide information and answer questions. And then I did also want to let you know, I know I get a lot of questions about this. We did also put together a map. So our office, we created this. Deena from our office did it. And we'll have this. So whoever's at the info table will be able to guide them if they're like, hey, we need a pharmacy. Where can I buy a newspaper at? We can tell them and kind of provide that. And we'll also tell them what stores are open based on the day that they're here. So it will update this every visit and encourage them to visit the businesses that are open. Like I said, this one with it being a Monday, they're not all open. And I have also extended the opportunity to the downtown businesses, if they would like to offer a special to the guests, I could put that on the map as well. And some people have taken me up on that. So that's pretty much it. Oh, and I am also pleased to announce that we are in negotiations with this company for a two-year contract. And so we have 13 dates scheduled tentatively for next year. I know that, I believe you guys have signed off on that, or Carol has signed off on it.
Just a slight, can you hear me? Just a slight correction. It's a 10-year agreement. We did sign a 10-year agreement.
Oh, okay.
So.
Even better.
Even better.
10 years. Do you guys have any questions? Yes, done.
I saw the 26,000 direct spending.
Yep.
Is that estimated per visit, or is that through the entire summer?
For the course of the summer. Yep.
26,000 for the 10 stops.
Yep. So each of those stops that I mentioned, they're, the Environmental Learning Center, those six places are all getting paid. So American Cruise Lines does make a donation or a contribution to them. A lot of the places that they stop, there will be a price per person ticket fee, but since ours are free, they're just making, writing them a check basically to help offset their costs and make it worth their while to visit here. And then they contract with, their coach bus drivers are contracted through a separate company. So they may be staying in Muscatine. I have asked multiple times and haven't gotten a confirmed answer on that. And I've also offered to get them lodging at the Merrill, if that is something that would be of interest to them and work with their per diem. And, oh, and I should mention also, so the other thing that I have to do with this is identify and train tour guides. So on each of those coach buses, Muscatine residents, who are paid by American Cruise Lines, again, it goes back into that direct economic impact in Muscatine, they do get paid for their services. They will get on those coach buses and provide tour services. So I write a script, and I've been updating that and riding the loop to time it around, right? We have a lot of stop signs in this town, if you haven't noticed, and driven a circle a lot of times. But, so that's part of what I've been working on also is, you know, telling good stories about Muscatine, timing it so when they get there, what we're talking about coincides with where they're at in the town and from place to place, and making sure that those people are, you know, well-versed in answering questions and presentable and things like that. So.
The mill going to be open?
Is the mill going to be open?
Mm-hmm. Or they can actually walk in?
Yep.
During the weekends, there's somebody there that'll actually educate them on the process. Is there going to be somebody there to do that?
Yeah, so Heather Shoppa, who typically is the person that does that, is going to be their tour guide for the whole time. And she's doing it the whole summer. So she's actually, and she did tourism at one point quite a few years ago. So she's super well-versed. I've given her the script, met with her, kind of on-boarded her in that process. But she'll get on with them at the riverfront, ride with them to the mill, open the mill or run the mill, tell them all about the mill history, which she's phenomenal at, and ride back with them. So that's, yeah, they're going to really have a great time because she's a phenomenal storyteller and hostess. Really pleased with that.
Any other questions, comments?
Just a great opportunity for Muscatine, and thank you to you in the chamber for all the hard work in making this happen. And hopefully, too, we can learn something from American Cruise Lines. They can give us ideas on what other communities are doing or other things that we might be able to invest in to make it even a better destination than what Muscatine already is.
Yeah, and I think it is worth mentioning, they really, really love our riverfront. American Cruise Lines, American Queen, their contacts compared to other places that they go up and down the river and in different parts of the country. They really, really love that their guests can come right off the boat and get on that bus and walk right downtown. That's super uncommon, so they love it. They really, really do. We have a great riverfront. Obviously, a lot of that is a result of city council and the city putting that effort into beautifying our riverfront in our downtown, and it doesn't go unnoticed. And I do also, I guess, want to mention, since I'm up here, when my contact at American Cruise Lines first came to Muscatine a few years ago, the downtown is really what caught her eyes. So your investments in downtown and those improvements in making it look nice and beautiful and vibrant and welcoming is what helped bring these boats to Muscatine. So, great work. Well, thank you guys so much. If you have any questions, let me know. Would love to have you come to the ribbon cutting. Feel free to come down any of those mornings that I have the dates out there. It is a blast to talk to these people. They love Muscatine, and it's great to hear how much they love it. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Next up is a presentation on Pet Data from Officer Kay and Yurak. Is he actually presenting, or is it going to be just you? Both of us? Okay. Is that better?
I can hear you, but I don't know.
Yeah, I couldn't. You can't hear me?
No.
Okay. I'll talk louder. Okay.
Thank you.
Can you guys hear me? Yes. Awesome. For those who don't know me, I'm Animal Control Officer Patel with the City of Muscatine. I'm just here to give you some updates regarding Pet Data, the third-party pet licensing software company that we recently went with. Aligns with Safe Community, we can get some information regarding pets and households, whether there's fire or anything along the lines of that. It's really helped us get pets back home to the people they belong to. Pet Data was launched January 15 of this year, so we do have limited data to update you on until May 31 is what this information contains. Pros with Pet Data, we've had easier online access, both for customers and myself to check on people who are registered with the program. We can view any pets that anyone has ever had at any point. So, and I'm in my truck, at the office, anywhere, I can view any of those things. Customer support has been very helpful, not only for myself, but I've been told by citizens that they've been very helpful to get any of their issues corrected. We get very in-depth reports. There are no questions left unanswered through Pet Data. They have been very, very thorough with any reports that I've requested through them. And something that the citizens have reported that they've loved is that they are getting reminders to update their registration for their pets. So that has been a big thumbs up from the community. The con, some citizens are still coming down to City Hall trying to register their pet, may have frustrations with either the online or mail-in portion and just want it done for them. So we're still transitioning in that sense. But we do have some good mail-in participation as well. So we are getting that transition from people. Here are the pet licenses over the years. As you can see, we're trending upward. If you notice, 2022, you'll see 648 registrations, which is the highest that it has been for the whole year. That is one year that we did hold free registrations for pet registration. So there were no costs to people. It is significantly higher than all the other years. Again, this is the breakdown just of 2024 so far, so just the five months of the data that we have available. And the light blue, you'll see that is a one-year registration. Dark blue is two years. And then the orange is three. So it coincides with rabies vaccination. So however long your rabies vaccination is, you can choose to register for that period of time as well. That goes with the dog park passes as well. You're able to purchase however long your rabies vaccine lasts. This is our mail-in versus online. Light blue is the online, and the mail-in is the dark blue. I would say it's almost 50/50 initially off the bat. We had quite a few online, but it's pretty halfway in the middle. And then here is the revenue of the same years for registration. We, I put some notes here on the side, are in this last year, 2324 with this new Pet Data. Just a reminder that we did have to increase fees to cover the cost of Pet Data. So you will see that slightly higher. That is the reason why. This is a summary report, broke down, hard to put all this information in a graph. There's just so much information. It breaks down all of the different groups, so altered, unaltered, and then also including dog park passes, seniors. So it is all-inclusive to any sort of license that you can buy individually, broke down. You can see the totals on the bottom. We do not have a late fee, as you noticed on this as well, which we had decided as a city that we were not going to do. We are hoping to continue to promote pet licensing and support the public on any issues they may have. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have regarding the Pet Data software update.
I also have any questions. John?
Go ahead.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah.
How many dogs do we have in Muscatine?
I do not have the answer to that question at this time.
2,000 or 10,000?
I do not know.
No?
Councilman, I think probably we could answer that question better if we allow the process here for people to register, and we have a better understanding of if people are doing the right thing and how many dogs that will have maybe a year from now, or maybe two years from now. I would support Courtney's answer is, I don't think anybody really knows, quite frankly. We can estimate, but I don't know that we really know.
And I posed the question or asked the question not to be critical of the online pet licensing system. I think it's great. I think people should be able to register their pet right down there at our desk as well. And I think, you know, the mail-in and like I say, online is a good service, too. But we have, we're on track for, you know, 750 dogs to be licensed. Do cats, are cats supposed to be licensed?
Yep, cats as well. Dogs and cats.
Cats we have in Muscatine, how many are registered, you know?
Same answer applies.
I know. So I guess I bring these numbers up and talk about this because, you know, whether it kind of gets people riled up or whatever. But two or three, when we were arguing the dropping the pit bull ban, I heard time and time again, we want our pit bulls and mixes to be registered and have them, you know, out there living a good life in the city without any inhibitions. But has there been much of an increase in those licenses?
So the number was zero prior, of course, to the ban lifting. So we do have the ability to check breeds, and we do have pit bulls registered, to answer your question.
Glad you're keeping track of the breed. Is that correct for me to say that?
Yeah, yep.
Keeping track of the breed, mixed breed and that kind of thing. But there are a lot of dogs out there.
Yeah, I would agree.
That are not registered, and a lot of cats. And so my point is, we've got a lot of work to do yet. By far and away, 700 dogs. I don't know. I'll just make an estimate. 10%?
Of households?
20? You know, I don't know, of the dogs in town. So council, you know, we have a lot of work to do, I think, with this. I think the online is, like I say, I've said it and I'm repeating myself, you know, and rambling, I think it's a great service to the citizens to be able to do this. Thanks for your work with managing all those statistics and that and so forth. So don't get me wrong on my questions, you know, about this issue.
No, we truly all, I think, hope to see a great increase and see some compliance with the ease of access is kind of the hope.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Gordon?
Which, you know.
Sorry, I thought we were done.
Well, you know, coming into City Hall and registering, I get a hard time all the time from my family. I like to go into the post office. I like to go into the bank. I like to go into places, you know.
My folks are the same way.
So if there's something we can do to make sure dogs and cats get registered down here at our desk appropriately, you know, I think that'd be a good option. But on the other hand, I'm sure it'll continue to be a transition to where that's, no one ever even thinks about that anymore. Anyway, I'm sorry for.
No, it's okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to take a swag at your number that you're asking for, John, based off of information from the American Vet Association in 2012, when I was doing research for the dog park. We have approximately over 5,000 dogs in town, based off of their numbers. A third of the households in Muscatine, so it'd be 9,000 households, a third of that times 1.6 average dogs per household. So that's where I used to get the five to six. I would differ with some folks, but that's based off the American Vet Associations. At that time, we had a very sad number of registrations. We had about 150 pet registrations at that time. Yeah.
There we are.
So nobody was coming in. Some were. Some were very loyal and very good, but it just wasn't working. And then when we added the dog park, we had a separate, you know, registration fee, two separate fees. You've made it easier. We've seen an increase in the first five months. I would expect by the end of the year, we might be close to 1,000, and that maybe should have been our first goal, which is a really great number. What I like is the safety reporting aspect, because one of the first questions I think I might have asked you, Officer Patel, when we did our ride-along, is like, do you have a report that tells you how many dogs are in that home, like for fires or things like that, or that you could return if you found a dog with a tag that you could reach out? They didn't have easy access to a report like that. I said, can you get it once a month so you have some information? And that wasn't there, but it's there now. So you can see that information. We were, turn animals faster, first responders can know what they're going into. And maybe that's where the size of the breed might be helpful and stuff. But I think you're definitely on the right track. I think we're going to see the numbers increase. Are people going to have a difficult time transitioning to all electronic? Yeah. So whatever we can do to help them, whether we need to have an iPad there that they can log in and do it. But I, we have to look at the increases we've got in the last five months alone, and that safety of that reporting is great. So thank you for getting this implemented.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate it. 5,000 dogs. I don't know how many cats. I can get to those numbers.
Councilmember Lampy?
Yeah, thank you, Peggy, for that, because I was asking about, you know, what percentage of animals do we think we have registered? So, you know, we're still at a fairly low percentage, which I think was where John was getting. So I would encourage, I don't know how we do this, whether it's through you or through the city marketing effort, I think we need to alert more people to that, that they need to have their pets registered, they need to have their pets licensed. So I think we should probably go out and do a little bit of a marketing campaign toward that to help drive this up, because it isn't about, hey, we want your, the dollars for registration. It really is about safety and understanding the community and stuff. So I think it is important that we continue to market this. You mentioned that your report does give us breeds, so when the time comes to talk about that, we can get a report out by the number of animals registered. We can get breed and type at that point. Is that correct?
Yep. So there is a ton of information available, small breed, large breed, colors, everything that you can imagine, they are actually able to provide for us.
So I would suggest, the next time you come, if you could bring that data, that would be great. If we could bring that data along, that would be good.
Yeah.
And then when a pet is adopted from the Humane Society, is it a requirement that they then be licensed at time of adoption?
So we have started a new process with the implementation of Pet Data. Both of the shelters here in town, Humane Society and Takes the Village are to send that with them. When any dog is, or cat, is seen by a vet in town, whether that be from the shelters or from the local vets, they are required to send that list of information to Pet Data. So then they are therefore then sending them that, hey, it is time to get registered, and then those repeat warning reminders after that.
But it's not a requirement at time of adoption. If you're to adopt this pet, you have to license it at that time. We send the data so that they do register, but there's no requirement that if you're going to adopt that pet, it has to be registered at that time.
So technically with city code, yes, but we just build in that backup factor. If people don't take their own personal responsibilities to do that after that, they're giving that in their adoption packet, they're giving that at the vet's office. If they are failing to complete so, to do so, Pet Data is following up with them after that.
But they can take the animal home without registration?
Yes.
Dawn, just a point, just so you're aware, pets have an age date that they can't. So if they're getting a brand-new puppy, they aren't even going to have their
Shots.
shots yet.
Okay.
So they won't even have their.
Got it.
And this counts only for city dogs and cats.
Yep.
So a lot of them go out to the county. I think, I believe they're promoting it very well. It's just sort of hard to say, hey, you've got to stop, and you've got to fill this out online. And they're like, I'd rather do that for my private. And they're like, I'd rather do that from my private computer and not a public.
Yeah, understood. And I think, again, that's where I'd go back to, you know, city marketing group and stuff with Kevin and have him market this a little better because using my household as an example, you know, my wife didn't necessarily know that, hey, I have to register my dog and my cat. She remembered the dog, but not the cat and stuff.
A lot of it's education.
A lot of it's educational that I think we need to get better at and continue to make this. Because Pet Data is a great deal. We just need to make sure that we as a community are using it more.
I agree.
One thing they did do, Don, is they did do a video of the process. So a short training video as opposed to just putting a press release out there. So I think that will help some people, so.
Good, good.
Councilmember Osborne?
Well, it's good, it's good to see that we're not even through 2024 yet and we have so many registrations already. Compared to last year, that's phenomenal. I would say the online and the email thing seems to be working contrary to what some folks are saying on social media. I haven't heard anyone on social media say, hey, this is great.
Yeah.
But the data supports it by almost threefold halfway through the year. So it'd be amazing to see what happens. You know, the trend's a little down the last few months, but maybe when Christmas comes around, we'll get more new pets. You know, whatever. And not to beat a dead dog or a horse. An independent, another source with 2022 data pretty much agrees with Peggy's five, you said five thousand. This would come out to be five to six, which is pretty close to John's ten percent. So, good job.
I have a couple of questions, comment too. Of those dogs that you're going out and you're seeing them, I mean, I actually got to ride along with you. It was wonderful. How many of those dogs are you seeing that are actually licensed? And at that point, are you, you're educating the person that they need to be licensed? And is there follow-up from you to go back to them to say, hey, this isn't done yet?
Yes, absolutely. That's a great question. So it's hard to put out a percentage with that. But every single person that I am coming into contact, they are receiving that information, not only regarding Pet Data, maybe about vaccination or, you know, at large, any of those topics, they're thoroughly covered each time. And yes, there is follow-up to go back.
And I can tell you, looking at this data, you have to remember, some animals were for three years. So the 2022 data may not even have a re-up until 2025. I know I, when I, I have six dogs, so I, I know, John, I knew that was going to happen. So part of them, I've already gotten registered. They're all in there, but they haven't come up for their license yet until next month when they get their rabies vaccine.
Yep.
I did have one question on that. Then I was thinking, I was looking at this chart differently. Are these new registrations or are these, like if I registered last year, I'm also counted this year?
You're not counted this year. These are only new registrations.
So if I've got a three-year registration, I'm not showed up as being registered?
Yeah, you will not, in this documentation, you will not be seen as registered in the numbers for this year.
I think in the future it might be helpful to, you know, if we've got so many registered this year, that's really the number.
Yep, that's the number I was looking for, was the new registration and then a cumulative number of animals that we have registered.
Is that available through Pet Data to get that information? I know we're at the beginning of it, but.
I can ask. I can ask the staff.
Go ahead, Councilman.
One point of clarification, you said you have six dogs?
Yes, sir.
But are, how big are your dogs?
Three are Chihuahuas and three are Dachshunds.
So they're.
They're small.
Are they?
And I know I've had, I've talked to, sorry, the chief of police and he said sometimes the Chihuahuas are worse than the pit bulls, so.
Or what?
Are worse than the pit bulls.
Oh, God.
Chihuahuas can bite your ankles, you know, you gotta watch those.
So. Any other questions for officers?
If I may add one thing just to the council, I think it's important to elaborate on what Councilman Lampy spoke about here earlier so the public knows of our educational piece with this. As Councilman Gordon had mentioned, you know, there is a video out there. But we started off doing an extensive educational piece. There are brochures that were made through Kevin Genison and us and local printing and all of those brochures layout city code and a lot of other things on how to help with the registration. And those are placed at strategic place specifically at our veterinaries in the area as well as at the Humane Society and at Takes a Village as well too. And to begin with, we did a pretty robust social media kind of output with it. So I hear what you're saying and I could not agree more that we can always educate more. But I think it's also important that we're trying our best at, to begin with.
Carol, do we have that opportunity for, to have Kevin, like re-release the information or have it pushed out like every six months as a reminder to the community?
Yeah, we have a communications calendar that we follow, so we can just add that to be done quarterly. Would probably be a good idea. Sure?
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
The next on the docket is discussion regarding establishing a council liaisons to the city boards and commissions. And City Administrator Webb is up.
I don't know. I'm not sure what that thing does. Yeah, you want to do this? I'll just pull it up.
Yeah, I thought that number was the total number registered. That's just new. So this is new. So we really don't know how many total number that we have registered. So it could be higher when we look at that.
It is higher.
But it won't be substantial.
It is higher because ours has been.
Because it's a one-year deal, most of them are doing one years, yeah.
Okay. So in, well, first, the direction that we're seeking tonight is two questions. One is, does council want to move forward with establishing and appointing council liaisons to boards and commissions? And two, if so, does council want to amend the resolutions to address some of the concerns noted by board members? So a little background, in October of 2023, City Council reviewed the city's whole boards and commission system. And in the process of that review, council determined that establishing liaisons from council members, liaisons to the boards and commissions would assist in a variety of ways. One was supporting two-way communications between the council and the citizen board because for the most part, they are advisory to the council. Resolving questions the board might have about how the role of the council relative to the role of the board and its responsibilities. And three, to identify and resolve any issues that might exist with respect to the functioning of a citizen board, which we have had happen. And the idea would be to sort of head off any of those issues. So after that presentation, I drafted two resolutions for council consideration. One resolution was just to simply create liaisons and it outlined all of the roles and the responsibilities of the council member. The second one was to actually appoint certain council members to certain boards and commissions. But after that packet was posted to the public, there were some concerns that were raised by various board members and commissions. And so first I'll go over a little bit about what the responsibilities were of the liaisons. To be clear, it was not to direct the board or commission in its activities. It was not to serve as a member of the board. It was just primarily to serve as a contact on behalf of the council, provide that two-way communication channel, support efforts in possibly recruiting qualified citizens for open vacancies on the board or commission, helping resolve any questions that the board might have about how the role of the council, the municipal government or, and the board and commission, how they relate to one another. To establish contact with the board chair and effectively communicate the role of the liaison, provide some procedural direction and relate council's position on certain matters. And then to help resolve and identify any problems that might be identified in respect to how the board functions. Some of the board member concerns that were raised, I received some emails and I think some council members had folks reach out. One, they wanted to know, will the liaison be required or expected to sit in on board meetings? The answer to that is no. Council members may never attend a meeting or they might attend one or two a year, but they are available to that chair to serve as a contact and answer questions. They felt that council members may be biased in assisting with finding new members if they would, I guess, essentially stack the deck around certain opinions. They felt that language should be added to the resolution about how to address concerns when a liaison oversteps their bounds essentially or when they behave badly in a board meeting and how, what would the process be to remove them from the position? They felt part of the whole boards and commission system improvements that we're trying to make involves some onboarding for board members and some training. And they felt like the council liaisons should also receive that training. And then one commission in particular just voiced general disapproval. They just didn't really think it was necessary. So those two resolutions in response to some of those concerns were pulled from the agenda. But, you know, I think we need to make a decision around, do we want to even move forward with this? It's not required by any means. It's just sort of a best practice. And if so, do you want to make any amendments to those resolutions to address some of the concerns that were noted?
Council have any questions or concerns? Councilmember Gordon?
I mean, I believe I would like to see us move forward again as a liaison, but making some of the adjustments recommend it into the resolution.
Councilmember Brockert?
I was invited to a board meeting that I was tentatively a liaison for and they asked me what my purpose was. And I said it was to sit there, keep my mouth shut and only answer questions if they asked me. And that's what I did.
Councilmember Lampy?
Yeah, I think we, you know, to me, this is a method to improve communication between the boards, the commissions and the council. I think what I, what, again, as a newbie, what I'm experiencing that recommendations are coming from the boards and the commissions and councils and stuff. And a lot of times, we as a council, at least for me, it's the first time I hear it is when those come there or to us. I think some of these proposals are large enough and dramatic enough that we need to get as much runway as possible to understand some of these proposals. And that's what I'd like to, that's why I think we should indeed move forward with these liaisons in there. I think we do need to address the concerns of the, of those individuals that says, you know, how do we address if we get, you know, a relationship that's not healthy between a city council and a board or a commission and stuff? How do we address that? How do we remove somebody from that if that case is? I think training is obviously important in there as well. But I look at this as an opportunity for the boards and commissions to use that liaison to help educate us as a council and to be their voice into these council chambers. So I look at it as a good thing on there. So, you know, me personally, I'd like to see a list of all the different boards and commissions that we have, which ones currently have liaisons assigned to them, which ones don't, which ones have expressed concerns that said, no, not me type stuff. And, you know, should we sit down and talk with them to make sure that we address their concerns or can we address their concerns? So I think there's, yes, I'd like to see us move forward, but it's not about, you know, it's not about control. It's not about influence. It's really about helping them navigate through this thing that we call city council meetings and stuff. And then making sure they're able to do as much as they possibly can for the citizens. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think having a council liaison is fine. I don't expect to.
Okay. I just, I just had a couple of comments. Did you have something? Councilmember Osborne? I just have a couple of comments. And it's like, to me, it's like when I first saw this and this first came up, it's like it's a matter of communication. It's knowing what, you know, the boards are, not necessarily that we have to keep an eye on what they're doing, but to make sure if they're having ideas or projects that are coming up, that council's aware of those so it doesn't become an I gotcha moment. And my question is, is who's actually responsible for bringing that information to city council? So is it the, the chair of each of those boards that should be bringing that information, you know, to Carol in a written notice so that Carol then can forward it to us as council? To me, that's more the process versus us having to sit there and not be there at every meeting because we're still not going to be capturing it.
Yeah, one practice I've seen in the past is that a board chair with the help of the board writes an annual report to the council. That's also a very common practice where they just tell the council what they've been, what their work plan was and what they've been doing in the last year. It's only a once a year thing, but it does give some perspective of what the board has been focused on. I think by the time something gets to council, it's usually brought by the staff liaison to that board. And, you know, it's, it, it, usually when things are brought to the council, it's sort of in the logical steps that we follow, but it may be a little late in the game for what council would like, you know, as far as being in the know about something. So maybe through those various tools, you know, you could be a little bit more educated on what the boards are working on.
So.
Go ahead, Councilmember Jender.
Angie, Carol, are, are we, it sounds kind of like, well, I shouldn't say sounds kind of like. Am I giving support to the third item here on the agenda, second item? Where we've already been appointed to certain boards? Is there any? I didn't see a glaring distinction between these number two and number three. I don't, just a little clarification.
Well, I think it was, do you want to do this at all? And if you do, do you want to put some guardrails on it?
Yeah.
That's the, those are the two questions. So I'm picking up yes to both.
Yes, I would, yeah, again, I don't, the, it needs to be the majority speak here, but for me personally, yes, I think we should move forward. Yes, we definitely need guardrails, both for the liaison and for the boards and commissions to make sure this is a healthy relationship between everybody involved.
Right.
What that all means, I don't necessarily know. I think that's what we've got to work out as we go forward.
We'll see as advocates if they need it.
Correct.
We get that information internally sooner than when it's right in front of us so we can advocate.
Agreed.
So then, and this is me just, I'm talking out the process. So then would it be then the council member's responsibility, bring any new projects like that to council? Or should that be the chair of that board?
Chair of the board.
You could make a recommendation, hey, this is a great project. I recommend that you maybe reach out to the right director and the city administrator and give them a heads up, you know.
Yeah, I think it would still be the chair of the board to bring it forward with, you know, the endorsement and stuff or input from the city council member that would be assigned to that board.
So then what would be the expect, because Carol, when Carol was talking, we need to think about too is, what is the expectation of the role of the, of the council member to go to those meetings? You know, I mean, Carol was like, you know, you don't have to go to every one of them. Well, if you miss that crucial one, you're not, as a council member, as a liaison, you aren't going to know what they're doing.
You can always look at the minutes. I mean, the minutes are available as well. I think if you establish a rapport with the chair, you're going to probably know what they're, what they're talking about, you know. I don't think you, you don't want to, you don't want to intimidate the board either in any way. So I think it can be a little bit more casual than maybe what you're, you know, less formal, I guess.
Okay. So let me ask, any other discussion that needs to occur? Go ahead.
Just an educational purpose on this. We have thirteen boards and commissions, is that correct?
That sounds about right, yeah.
Yeah. Well, how many of those are required by law? I mean, I know if you have zoning laws, you have to have a planning and zoning committee or, how many of those are actually required? Because they're generated by the council, correct? They're created by the council?
It depends on the board. So like MPW is, I don't know, I guess I would say it's legally required, you know, for them to function as an entity. The library board, the art center board, P and Z, zoning board of adjustments, civil service commission, those are all required boards. Parks and Rec is an advisory commission. Public art advisory commission is advisory and established by the council. Historic preservation, Cinda knows these better than I do. She's whispering in my ear. Can you think of another one that's advisory?
Airport.
Airport.
Airport is.
Tourism.
Airport is a kind of a necessary, I mean, they oversee the operations of the airport. Marketing and tourism is a board that's formed by agreement, I guess I would say, by agreement. So a lot of them are actually necessary. You know, I don't think it's bad for a council to evaluate if boards are bringing value. That's a good thing to do because you don't want to add bureaucracy when. That's a good thing to do, because you don't want to add bureaucracy when it, you know, if it's not adding any value to it. So I think that's a good thing to reflect on, though. Yeah. At, at one time, they disbanded, we had a construction appeal and advisory board, and it was disbanded because it was never used.
Yeah.
So that's, that's come back around again, but that has happened over the years, yeah.
One last one, and then I'll...
Absolutely.
So obviously, this will take a commitment from us as council members, that if we do move forward with this, we will, you know, we're going to need to be involved in those boards and commissions if that's the way it goes. So I know most of you have full-time jobs, and, you know, this isn't always going to be easy for us to make it. So it is a commitment both for us as council members to make it to those meetings. So I know me personally, you know, I'm retired, so I've got a, an advantage over some of you that are still doing full-time jobs. So I have a little more free time from time to time to make to these. But it is a commitment from us as council members to, if we're going to do this, we've got to, we've got to commit to it as well. So it's a two-way street there.
So basically, the direction that's sought is, the first one is, does the council want to move forward with establishing and appointing council liaisons on boards and commissions? Is there any objections to that?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. And the second one is, if so, does council want to amend the resolution to address some of the concerns noted by the board members?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
There you go.
Okay, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you. Moving on, we're going to do the downtown park strategy proposal presented by Councilmember Osborne. I'm squinting. There you go.
How do I advance this? Arrow up or down?
Arrow, yeah.
Okay.
Make sure, councilmember, make sure you talk into the mic.
I know, I have to set the example.
It's hard to hear.
Set the example, make sure this is quick, sweet. A lot of information to present in a little short amount of time. My name's Jeff Osborne, I'm second ward representative of the, that includes the downtown area, and I'd like to talk a little bit about downtown parking. And first of all, I'd like to say that nobody likes the part, any of the parking ideas that are currently going on, and they won't like whatever we do. So this is an effort to take some of the emotion out of that decision, because it can be very emotional, and when, no matter what you do, it's going to be wrong to what folks say out there. And so let's get started. First of all, I'd like to open up with, what would we say a vibrant downtown looks like? You know, we always say we want to have a vibrant downtown. We always say we want to have a vibrant downtown, but what is it, would we say that looks like? It's not a rhetorical question. Any...
Lots of activity.
Lots of activity.
Yep.
Yeah. What kinds of shops might we see, or what do we want to see? Offices? Empty stores? Maybe some retail? Coffee shops, restaurants, entertainment, nightlife? Salons? You know, trying to paint a picture of, there's a lot of different parking needs, and that's what strategy's all about. Let me see if this works. All right. So a little bit about the agenda. I'm going to give a little bit of background. I'm going to define turns, which is the measure for our strategy. And we've been, and the reason I'm doing this is we've been kind of getting the cart before the horse. We've been saying, "Let's remove meters, let's remove meters." Everybody's saying, talking about, "Let's do that," or "Let's change fines," or "Let's get meters, let's make them card-carrying," and all those other, those are tools. And I wanted to, I want to talk about, you know, all we're doing is talking about the tools we should use, but we don't know what the, what the target is, what we're trying to do with these tools, outside of the fact that we want a vibrant downtown, which is kind of hard to define. It's fairly subjective. So I'm going to give a little background, turns, and then talk about the strategy, take a, take a look at what it currently is and what it could be. So believe it or not, we have a strategy. Carol and I discussed, it has been thought out. There are some tools already in place, and so this will be kind of a review of that. But I think it, it's helpful to get those things kind of in front of folks. And then we'll get into, you know, I'll talk about little questions and feedback, and then really, at the bottom line, we're looking for, does council want to implement a turn strategy? And by that, I mean, do we kind of agree with the strategy that this is what we want to measure, you know, the, the goals against? And then we can talk about what tools can help us make that happen. My story starts with, you know, in background, my story starts with, I purchased downtown property almost a decade ago. Got it up and running, very excited. Within a few years, some days, nobody's coming in the stores. You have a lot of time to think about these things. And you're, you know, you're on social media, and you hear a lot about, "I'm not going downtown because there's not enough parking," and all this stuff. And I'm walking around downtown, and half the spots are empty. The two spots in front of my store, two cars are there, a lot of days, and two people would come out from a certain building, start them up, swap spots, go back in, come back three hours later, swap spots, and block those two spots all day. And then you start walking around, and I noticed roughly about, and this is about a decade ago, about nine various owners, restaurants, employees of some of the bigger businesses downtown were doing this. And for the most part, a lot of the, and I would drive by on my way to work in the morning at six in the morning, see some cars there, I'd actually take a picture. I'd come back around lunchtime, a lot of those cars are still there. You know, they should have been gone if we started enforcing at eight o'clock, and by 11 o'clock, they should have at least moved a little bit. And then I'd come home after work, five, six o'clock at night, and a lot of those cars are still there. Believe it or not, I'd work on the store late at night, go home at midnight, a lot of those cars are still there, and, except for the employees. So, so I really got interested in this. At that time, Second Street meters had been removed nearly a decade prior to this. So realize that was an effort to bring cars downtown. A decade later, we still don't really have what we wanted, which was customers downtown. You know, we had these cars just there all the time. And, and I would characterize that to be about half the, half of Second Street was those, what I just described. The other half of the street was some, you know, fairly empty at night. All of the side streets where the meters are at, like Iowa, north and south of Second Street, and Pine, and all of those would be empty most of the time, Second Street's where everybody had the cars. And it never really got less than about half full, maybe a third, third full, at the, in the middle of the night. During the day, it's pretty full. That's important, because if we're thinking about removing the meters and not, not, well, moving, removing the meters in, in the places where we have them now, we'd be doing this same thing almost two decades later, and repeating the same result. We still are not getting the results in those things. We just have free spots and a lot of cars parked downtown. So keep that in mind when we talk about this strategy, the next couple of slides coming up. Two-hour limit per spot, per meter, meter everywhere else. So I want to distinguish between, you know, there was a three-hour limit per spot enforced on Second, two-hour limit per spot on meters. Pearl Plaza was largely a success at that time. A lot of people would ask, you know, "Why aren't you trying to get into Pearl Plaza?" And even at that time, "Why not the mall?" Because the block I bought property on was largely vacant, and so was the blocks on each side of it. Pearl Plaza was, was basically it downtown, outside of some lawyers' offices and various items. But to put retail out in the kind of the middle of, middle of the, you know, was kind of questioned at the time. And all other blocks experienced a high vacancy rates, not just Second Street, but all. So what are, what are turns, and why are they important? Turns is simply the number of times a parking space has a different vehicle in it. So if you have a car move, you know, by, by our code or by any other tool that we use every two hours, that's about 12 turns a day. Really simple like that. If you, if you have a 12-hours or a 10-hour meter, let's say, then up to, two times, or as little as two times a day, but it could be more than that, it's fairly flexible. Why is it important? In congested area, you know, we don't need meters or any of this stuff in a residential area. We don't need, need the turns there that much. We don't, all we have is a homogeneous parking need. But in the downtown area, when you think about, and if you go down to the next part there, two-hour parking, 12 turns per day, you know, that really targets retail, coffee shops, and, and residents. And I, and it sounds a little weird to say residents, but we got a lot of, when council changed this in 2018 to two-hour parking on Second Street, a lot of the residents said, "Hey, that, that ended up being good for me, because I can drop, you know, I don't have these cars sitting there all day long, they're seeing the same thing I am as a store owner." But, you know, they need to drop off groceries and then go park to their, you know, go to their overnight spot. So having those spots turning was helping them as well. Three-to-four hour parking. One of the things that happened in 2018, when that change happened, was that we virtually eliminated three-hour parking altogether. The only three-hour parking that was available was on Second Street, and when that went away, almost everything went to two-hour parking. I'll show a diagram of that. So we got a lot of, you know, salons and folks saying, "Hey, I, you know, I want to, I want to go to the restaurant and I want to shop," and, you know, two hours, this isn't enough time. So, you know, we've, we've got eight years into that, we should learn from that. There's 10, I say eight-to-10-hour parking meters over there, I, out there. I have, I understand the wisdom of that, you know, around the courthouse and around City Hall, but there's some 10-hour parking meters in the city lots. There's also leased areas, leased in the, in the city lots. I'd like to maybe hear from Nancy in a bit around how many leased parking spaces are actually filled. Right now, those are limited to residents of the downtown area. And if they're, if we're not leasing them out, you know, if we've got some available and we don't, you know, we don't have a lot of usage rate, then maybe we look at opening that up to folks that, you know, maybe work downtown. I know that'd be a little hard to keep track of, because if they don't work downtown anymore, then how do we know that, you know? But it's important to know that that's enforced from, it's a little different in a couple of different lots, but most, you know, kind of 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and then it's open the rest of the night for anyone, free and open to everybody. All right, so this is our current situation and, and our, and our tools. So if you think of a strategy as being kind of like a target over to the right, where you want your highest turns in the middle, and as you go out away from where your most, your highest need is, you go out to the, the leased spaces, you kind of, you want to have your highest turns in a certain area, and then you want to move outward. Now, there's going to be some hard things to do about this. This is a strategy, and in my opinion, we should apply this as a design, what would we, we do with a, with a clean slate? Not base this on what stores are there now, or what's there now? Because at one point in time, we had a lot of vacancy, and, and why would you design for that? You know? Or we have a lot of things that don't look like a vibrant downtown. Why would we design around that? And so you kind, you kind of want to say, say, Second Street, right now, it has had a lot of focus on it. And that's where our highest turns are right now, by design. And so that would be like the center of the bull's eye over on the right. So that's a good starting point. The difference between the yellow and the red two-hour parking is, as I said earlier, two-hour parking on Second Street is enforced per block, meaning I can park one time on that block, I get chalked, as it's, as it's called. And then if they come back two hours or more later, I can get a ticket if I haven't moved to another block or out of the area. The red two-hour parking is back to the day, is at the days we were on Second Street when it was three-hours parking, and it's free and open for folks to swap spots all they want. So it's a level of turns that is being held with a tool called meters. But it's, you know, it's, but, you know, as opposed to everything outside of this, this target in gray is free and open and uncontrolled. Okay? So meters do provide a level of control. Because when we don't have it, if we were to remove all the meters in the red, then we would go back to the way it was on Second Street with no meters, and people would swap back and forth all day long. And they wouldn't have to, at least have the nuisance of coming back, in this case, every two hours to plug the meter. All right, so I'm sorry, I apologize for this, it's a little busy, but the intent here is to show, every star is a transition, is a, is a property that's in transition today, is the best I'll, I'll describe it. I, I want to be careful with what, how I say this, because, you know, these are not just, some would be called distressed properties, some would be called properties in transition. But these are the ones that are kind of like Second Street was eight years, in 2018, when, when we first bought downtown. Bought a store area downtown and opened up our store. If you look on Second Street, there's really about three properties right now that are in transition. And if you look outside of Second Street, you can see a lot more. If you look at the Sycamore Printing there at 12 o'clock on this diagram, it's hard to say how many stores that could be, but it probably used to be three, at least three to four bays that were combined together at one point in time. I've counted that as two, just to have a number. We've got the Journal that has recently sold, but it's in tran, you know, that's in transition. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but it's in transition. At 2 o'clock there, we've got the Masonic Temple behind the tree, and then we've got a big building that's been vacant for at least a decade or more. That would be, you know, maybe in the distressed category. The picture at 3 o'clock is an interesting one. There is a building right in the middle of that for sale. It's been for sale for a while, it hasn't had a business in it for a while. Next to that, there's two storefronts that have been converted to garages. And there's nothing wrong with that. It's allowable by code, as long as it's not on Second Street to have residential space on your first floor. We've, we've already talked that, you know, and we changed some code in, in that, in that area, outside of the downtown area. But what that signals is, I believe, if, if I were that owner, that's, for what it is today, that's a, that was a creative way to make that place useful. You know, we've got these, these properties, kind of like the one there at 2 o'clock that's been vacant for a long time. If that had a garage underneath it and an apartment finished, I bet you it'd be, it would be useful today. And under today's conditions, maybe that's the best use for that. But when you're thinking of vibrant downtown, garage storefronts are not, or didn't make the list. And wouldn't it be better if that was a storefront? Potentially even as a business, as a property owner, I would think that, because not only am I renting out the upstairs, I also have the downstairs with a renter in it too, versus it being a garage. And if we do this right, and we really start filling in a lot of this stuff, it's not too hard to make those garages back into storefronts. So we can't control all of that, a lot of variables, but we can try to set up the, set the framework or the stage for a vibrant downtown. The next one at about 5 o'clock, we got the Vineyard Church. The next one down behind the Vineyard Church at about six, almost 6 o'clock, by 30, we got La Rue Law Offices. The one there at 6 o'clock has had about three or four stores in it in the last decade. It seems to have a pretty stable store in it now. I haven't really seen it open much, but it's there and it looks clean and looks like it's active. The example at about 7 o'clock, same thing, couple of storefronts, former storefronts turned into garages. At 8 o'clock, we've got a, a long running barber shop that is empty now. It's recently sold, so that might be, but it's in transition, so I picked it out. Same thing with the former salon there. It's empty now, but it's recently sold and somebody's got a purpose for it, but it's in transition. You know, the point of this diagram is kind of where's the hotspot? You know, Second Street has, only got three and on these other ones where we actually have less dense businesses, we got far more in transition. A note about salons is when we went, when we lost three hour parking on Second, we had a lot of salons saying, that's not good for us. We've had a lot of turnover in salons. I would say the number of salons we currently have is probably close to what it was back then, maybe, maybe even a little more. But it feels a little unstable. We've had a lot of turnover in salons. We've had a lot of new owners come in, a lot of, but I think we've, we've held our ground on that. And then the last picture there of the Pearl City Popcorn, that business is for sale. It's been for sale since January. It's still open. But that's a long time to try and sell something that, I mean, if it was a vibrant downtown, I would, I would add to the fact that, you know, maybe, maybe these properties become very valuable and it's not too hard to sell them, you know? There's also a garage that used to be a storefront next to that too, so. Again, the garages aren't necessarily, I mean, I mean, I, I think garages are fine for the way we are today. I've, I've thought that's been a great way to solve a problem for that building owner. But again, a garage door is probably not the picture of a vibrant downtown. Alright, so this picture. We have Second Street on the left. This was taken about a week ago. We have Third Street on the right. This was taken the same day, about 11 o'clock, middle of the day. Which one looks like a vibrant downtown? You know? So I'll just let that hang a bit. I do, I do realize that according to the data that we've seen earlier, that as far as parking meter data goes, we get three quarters of our revenue with a lot on that street. So keep that in mind as we think about what tools we wanna use. Alright, so here's, here's the thought. And it's just a thought. It's a discussion tool at this point. It's not really even a proposal unless we kind of like it. But I took a stab at how can we get some three hour parking? And how can we, you know, if you remember that prior picture, it also paints a picture saying, wow, everybody likes the parking there, but on Third Street, they don't like it so much. And so how can we, you know, if people like that, how can we get more of that? And that's been what's been floating around a lot lately. Can't we just do three hours per block everywhere? Which is, can be done. I would say it's a step backwards in terms though, and that's, that's kind of my point. We should measure every one of these tools by did we improve turns somewhere? And so according to my estimates, we roughly have about one full-time equivalent. It's two part-time folks. We roughly have one time, full, full-time equivalent out there every day from 8 to 5, monitoring all this. You know, they start with the first thing in the morning, marking all the cars on Second Street, and then they walk the, the meters, getting back to this picture. They walk all those red streets and I'm told that Second Street takes most of their time, which is more than half in my, in my mind. But even if it's just half of a full-time equivalent, and we were to take all the meters out, has been, which is a popular idea, take all the meters out and then enforce by block on all those red streets. There's about 16 blocks there to six blocks in yellow. If you do the math in my head real quickly, that's an extra one and a half full-time equivalent to, to do that idea. It's just a tool. I'm not against it, but we need to understand what we're doing. So this idea does add more of that. It leaves the meters in blue. And it, and it returns three hour parking to the, to all the blue lines. So there isn't really anywhere in our high usage area on this map right now that doesn't have within a half a block two hour or three hour parking. And so that's why I kind of like this. It doubles the highest demand parking capacity. If you look at those two pictures, it restores three hour parking capacity and it proves turns for, I say 12 under utilized properties. Those are the ones in transition. There's actually 16 on that drawing, so we can debate how many there really are. I'll say considerably, there's probably 12 right now today. Other tool, other tools, oh, wait a minute. Okay. So what tools would I, if I were king of the world, what tools would I use to, to try and encourage this? I would change the, what it needed to, I think it's some code changes to make somewhat, you know, the red and the blue lines happen. I'd remove two hour meters on Fourth Street. If you look at that picture, you can see some meters on Fourth Street. I think that would need some study. My understanding is that sometime, at one point in time, some folks asked for those meters there. But I'm kind of, you know, I have a symmetrical mind and, you know, Mississippi Drive doesn't have meters and so why should Fourth have, you know, have meters? It make, it looks kind of up, you know? That's, that's how in love with this idea I am. That's, it was not as much thought as I gave it. I'll just be honest. But, you know, we do want folks to remove meters and so I did remove those meters. I also removed the meters along Third Street. Get back to my tools slide. Remove the meters along Third Street and force two hours per block like Second Street. So we basically doubled the capacity of our most popular parking spots. We increase all north-south meters from two hours to three hours, but still use meters. Again, if we want to get rid of the meters, you know, there's another tool to that, but I think it's gonna create another, you know, an additional full-time equivalent. I think in this, we have room to introduce the pay by card service for a fee and, and plus a transaction cost. And whatever the fee is would match, you know, our coin operated meters. The only penalty, I guess, for paying cards would have to pay that extra transaction fee and I think people with card, paying the cards are kind of used to that. And then, and also, I know we've got a strong desire not to increase fees for the meters, but I would want to go to a dollar. Half of that, you know, 25% of that or more would probably just be catch-up. You know, we've, we've already seen some data where we're, you know, the, the revenue that we're bringing in on, on meter, meter fees and lease spaces and fines and penalties is not, not meeting, you know, it's hard to break even. If we go to a dollar, that would cover, that would get us caught up. It would be one-third of the price for other cities around us that have meters. And and it would also, I, in my opinion, would have to study this. I'd like Nancy to really do the math on it. I did it fairly quickly. But, you know, is a dollar enough to do that as well as make up for the, all the free spaces we just created? So this is my thought on where we're at. This is gonna be one of my next questions is, do we adopt this? Do we do, you know, these as tools? Do we adopt the prior strategy? Do we drop this strategy? And also the next question is, do we, are we, do we, you know, we like some of these tools? Do we not like some of these tools? Couple of tools I did not mention are fines. We could look at making up some of the revenue for adding free spaces to, in fines. I do like the progressive fines where the first one is a free warning, which is less than our current, current one, but the second one ends up being like about seven bucks, $14 for the third and so on. And also the hours enforcement. We have some business owners saying that things have shifted. We've got more nightlife now. We'd like to see the hours enforced till like 8:00 PM. And potentially not start till eight, till 10:00 if we don't need to. But again, I think that would be, be some more study if we decide to move forward with some part of this and, in any kind of form. But I did not put them on the list. I just wanna make you aware of them. Alright, questions and feedback before we ask the question, Peggy?
Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you. Jeff, you've put a lot of work into it and I know a lot of thought over many years. Couple of things. First, the turn strategy is very interesting, but I disagree with your numbers. Because currently, we only enforce from 8 to 5. So your turns aren't like eight or so.
True.
The, the two hours is a four, four turn.
I understand what you're saying. I agree with that. I just had to use some kind of basis.
Yeah.
It's a scale more than it is a real number.
Getting four turns downtown would be great. I mean, that would be the expectation. I think we're doing that now. The other thing about Third Street is Second Street to Third Street, you got current state. It's not apples to oranges. It's not apples to slices of apples. It's not in comparison. In 1990, Third Street was vibrant to a point. We had retail, we had cons, we had Riviera, we had Sumis, TV, there was a taco place. But the, the change, it happened and all of a sudden it became parking and less retail. Bigger bank, things like that. Do we think we're gonna gain that back on to the major portions of Third Street? Probably not. I can see the areas you pointed out and the, you know, some of them are really great buildings. Pro hair popcorn. But you can't compare Third Street and to take the parking off of there, I think is premature. Taking it off of Fourth Street is premature. I sort of like the idea going to the voice of the customer, checking with some businesses and maybe turning, turning that into 10 hour parking. Just so that we can leave the parking there as a request of the people that had asked for it, but use it for the people that work downtown that might wanna, instead of going to the riverfront, they could have a few more 10 hour parkings in that area. And it wouldn't cost us anything except re-monitoring it. So that's just a couple of things. I mean, Second Street is, is rocking. You see a lot of traffic. Third Street, I would leave the parking. Fourth Street, I like a change. I don't like taking it out though. So, but I don't know that we're ready to do this just, you know, at this point. We've got lots of things going. We're trying to look at tools for the parking, so we have a, a hybrid way of collecting fees. You know, coins and applications. We've got maybe a new strategy. We're going back six years and sort of erasing anything a council did in 2018. Cause they had a lot of discussions about two hour versus three hour. So, I, I mean, I think we need to consider it, but it's not gonna be like out of the gate tonight, in my opinion. So.
What would you do with Third Street?
I would leave it metered.
And?
With an application.
Two hours?
Uh, yeah, you know, I, I'm a two or three hour. I can go either way on that because I'm, I see if you're shopping and go to a salon or things like that, I'm not as emotionally attached to that, but I wanna keep it metered.
And just to tell you why I, I went with what I did, was to double the capacity. It wasn't necessarily that I thought would make Third Street look like Second Street as far as stores goes. But it would provide more of that parking one block away from where the, all the action currently is. And so, but I understand what you're saying. I, I'm not, I'm not in love with any of this actually.
They're going to dinner at Boonies. I, I would question the validity of enforcing to 8:00 PM. But I think we'd have to talk because that's staffing. Just a couple of thoughts on my side. Thanks for all the, all the analysis.
Thank you for your input.
Councilmember Brockert?
Thank you for putting all this together for us to review, Jeff. As you probably know, I am adamantly opposed to raising parking fees at this time, going from 50 cents to a dollar is probably more than the folks will bear right now. The other thing is too, I am, would more favor doubling the fine for, you know, people who break the rules should pay for breaking the rules. So let's double the fine from $5 to $10 and see where that gets us. And as far as the meters on Fourth Street, to me, those are a holdover from when the post office was there. So I would be in favor of getting rid of those altogether because I'm not sure how much revenue we get off those, but it surely can't be that much.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I guess, again, Jeff, thanks for putting this together. I think there is some additional studies, some of the questions being asked. Can we look at this, this map and say, you know, Fourth Street generated X dollars in coins or X number of uses? I think I see Nancy said, is that shaking yes that you would be able to provide us with? How, what's the usage of all those different meters or not? I don't know if that's possible. She's, she's not smiling too much at me now.
No.
But if we could get to that type of data, then we'd be able to figure out, you know, to Jeff's point, if we're talking about turns, where, where are people using it today? Where are they not using it? Where are the meters used today? Are they used on Fourth Street? I don't even, I couldn't tell you if I, I don't park up there, so I don't know. But I think it's interesting to start talking about if our strategy is a vibrant downtown. Parking obviously is a portion of that. Turns obviously is something important to the shop owners, to the, to the residents. So when they go downtown, it's like, yeah, I can find a spot. I can, I can get there. I can visit the downtown businesses. So I think there's a lot of moving parts in this, but I think it is, again, a good start to get us to talk about strategy and where do we want, you know? Cause we do hear a lot about, well, I want free parking in front of my business. You know, why can't I have free parking in front of my business? Just get rid of all the meters. Well, that's fine, but you still have to worry about turns. Cause then people will, to Jeff's point, they're just gonna park their vehicle and become a dusty vehicle in front of the shop. So I, I think we've gotta roll all these things up into a strategy and, and then use the different tools we have.
Thanks, John.
Jeff, can I, you know, your mention of the salons that are kind of strapped with a two hour parking, so a salon appointment is over two hours?
It can be, yes.
Okay. I'm not gonna comment on that. So how do the salon owners or the, the patrons, how do they, what do they do? They gotta go out to a metered park on you know, Cedar Street, Second More or Iowa Avenue and put more money in the meter?
At this point in time, they would, or they could park down on the riverfront. It's probably the easiest right now. You know, it's within a block of Second Street. And there's, one of the things that was helpful about the Mississippi Drive is they created more crosswalks. You know, there's one at about every block now. It used to just be one on Iowa. And it was a four lane death trap to try and walk across. Yes, there was a cross, controlled crosswalk there, but I can remember trying to do that. And bottom line is the data, you know, if you go out there and you see how it used to be, nobody parked on the riverfront much back then, but they do now. So that was a good thing too. John, anything else? Okay.
He's going down the cart, count parking.
He's gonna go plug a meter.
I have some comments, Jeff. I've actually talked to some of the, the residents. Thank you again for all of the work that you've done on this. This is a great start of what we're looking at. I've had some of the owners, especially those that own like grooming shops for not humans, but for dogs, where it's like, it's a two hour parking spot, so the person has to get out of their car, put stuff in the thing to go run their dogs in, to come back out, to get in their car to go home. And at that point, it would be nice to just have like a stop and go, you know, a spot for that, just to, as we, we're starting there, thinking about things. And it's even like with the popcorn shop, this is my own personal bias. It's like, I would rather hop out of my car, run into the popcorn shop, grab my popcorn, hop back in my car and go versus having to pay. Matter of fact, there's times, I'll be totally brutal and honest, I'd rather get a $5 ticket or take my chance of getting a $5 ticket than to drop money in that container for, you know, a 10 minute.
There are loading zones on every block along Second Street. One to two spaces. There's a, a long loading zone over there, up there. spaces. There's a long loading zone over there, up there where Feather Your Nest used to be over by Pearl Plaza. But, so there are those stop and go places, but they're all on Second Street right now. There wouldn't be one in front of the popcorn place.
It doesn't help when the grooming shop is up off of Fourth and Sycamore. So, just a thought.
And that's where, you know, potentially as a business owner, if we designed this right, and I need that, I mean, I would want, I mean, we picked the spot because it had a loading zone because we knew we were going to have B&amp;B guests loading and unloading, you know, baggage all the time. And so that attracted us. That was one of the reasons why when we picked the spot, everyone says, well, why aren't you, why are you there? You're so far from Pearl Plaza. Well, it had loading that we could, you know.
Well, and I've talked to a couple, not necessarily our residents, but people that come into Muscatine to shop. And a lot of them, because I've, since this has come up as a hot topic for us, I've been asking that question. A lot of them say, if I'm going to shop downtown, I'm just going to park at the riverfront, walk across, like you said, with, you know, only having to go across two lanes of traffic. And then that way I don't have to worry about paying any ticket or feeding the meter. So just some food for thought. So with that being said,
I would like to say one more thing.
Pardon me?
Yeah, if there's any more questions after that, I'd like to say one more thing.
I'm not comfortable moving this plan forward right now, but I'm comfortable with continuing the discussion and talking to, you know, input from city employees and, you know, getting some thoughts from, more thoughts from you, other council members, Carol, you know, Nancy, every, I'm not in favor of moving this forward right now, but I am in favor of continuing the discussion in some way or another.
And that's what the intent here is really. I mean, that's, when I said it from the beginning and I was a little back when I said it, whatever we do, everybody's going to hate it, all of it. Whatever we have, everybody hates all of it. And so this is not a surprise. You know, I put enough detail into this to give you all, you know, not intentionally, but, I mean, I'd love it if you all liked it, but at the end of the day, I didn't expect that to happen. Because I put too much detail in it and there was too many things to pick at. The main thing I want us to walk away with tonight, though, is let's talk strategy before we talk tools. You know, let's align, you know, let's get our objectivity and our opinions and our emotions and everything that we use to decide, everything you all said tonight, at least focused on a strategy so that we have a basis that we can all work from that says, hey, that idea does not help what we wanted to do in, what we want to do in this area, you know. But this idea does do a good job of it. It might cost more. You know, it might involve meters where, that people don't like, but, you know, at least we're not going backwards in turns anywhere. Okay? So you know the current picture. That's currently our benchmark. Let's not make it any worse anywhere. And so that's my two cents. If you want to go ahead and.
City administrator, do I have the right to change the question that's being sought?
Sure.
Okay. I'm going to change it just based on what I'm hearing from council. What my question's going to be to council, is there any objections that we look at this information going forward and not make any direction or make any directives regarding the presentation that we saw? Is there any objection to that? Is that clear enough, council?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Oh, boy. Basically, that council would recognize the presentation that was done today as more of advisory or a starting point for us looking forward.
That's not what you said the first time.
I know, but I was trying to make it more abbreviated. So.
I would object a bit. I like the idea, but not enough. What is the next step and when?
Yeah, because I like the idea as long as we can somehow put, whether it's a work group or whatever you would call it, to take this concept and refine it and move it forward. Because I think there is some nuggets in here that Jeff presented that we can work with as we move forward. But how do we move this thing forward is right.
I have some input on that. So it was 2000 and what, seven, that we did a full reconfiguration, basically, sort of what we're talking about here. And we used a task force at that time in the chamber, actually. They managed the task force. So I was just texting with Mayor Bark and he said that he would work with us to do sort of a survey of downtown users, but also maybe form a focus group of a variety of downtown users that we could get some input on about the proposal and, you know, adjust it accordingly to meet, you know, potentially meet the needs of a wide variety of people that frequent the downtown. So does that sound like a good next step? And Mayor Bark and I and Nancy can work together to sort that out?
And when?
Well, I mean, we can do it as soon as I get back. I mean, we can start the conversation. I see Nancy's coming to the podium.
How about, how about we put, how about we make it this way? On the 11th meeting, you will come back with times where or what configuration that has come out of our discussion tonight? Would that be better?
We can give you a more defined process. I think we could do that on the 11th.
Excellent. I like that.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Just a point of clarification real quick, too. The strategy part, does that come up recently? Because originally it started with just replacing the meters, right, with no change of strategy?
Right.
Is there a better request to change the strategy?
No, I mean, council, when we brought this to council in basically June of '23, we asked, do you want to committee? Do you want to look at changing the strategy? And at that time, council said, no, we just want to look at the technology. But I think in the process of evaluating the technology, that's maybe informed this idea around, well, maybe we should look at the strategy, too. I could be wrong about that, but that's what it feels like to me.
Yeah. This presentation was inspired by all the talk I heard out of that discussion. Started to become, let's get rid of all the meters and do three hours everywhere. At that point in time, I'm like, whoa, wait a minute. You know, if we want to talk about improving meters, that's in our existing mind fight? That's a baby step? I think we could do that. Still move forward with that and not have to wait for this longer process to happen. We, and in fact, I've got it on my slides to go ahead and do that because if we do it for even three months, we get a lot of good data on how many would use it and how many don't. And that helps us have this later discussion that I was, that I would anticipate. So, but yeah, I didn't want to discuss removing meters altogether without developing a strategy.
Okay. Yeah, because I wasn't aware that there was any discussion on changing the strategy. I mean, I've heard, you know, removing the meters. I didn't hear the change everything to three-hour parking or any of that stuff. So open to it, just didn't know where the strategy request had started or came into. So, sorry, Nancy.
Sorry. So does that, does that give you enough clear direction, Carol, that on the 11th, July 11th, you'll come back after having a discussion with the chamber regarding them actually researching?
Sure.
Parking meters and strategy.
Yeah, we exploring that old process.
And the task development of the task force.
I reviewed that entire process about this, thanks to Ann Meeker. She get, you know, first thing she did back when I started this conversation with council eight years ago. Jeff, boom! Don't put meters on second.
I don't think there's ever been a discussion recently about that.
No.
Yeah. And, yeah, and I'm not for that either, but.
Go ahead, Nancy.
As far as this concept of having a task force, I was involved in that 2007 one. And it wasn't quick.
Right.
But it was a steady, everybody could understand where everybody else was coming from. And just to, and that's when the meters were removed from Second Street. The charge to that task force was whatever changes you're proposing, things need to pay for themselves. So it's not general fund picking up enforcement costs. And just since we were talking about Fourth Street, that was requested by a member of the task force back then who didn't like downtown workers parking in those spaces all day long. So they requested the meters. So it's that kind of thing that I think a more balanced user group, if we're looking at strategies, can be done by, if you get the right mix of people.
Yep.
And the other thing that Jeff brought up, our lease parking is at least 95% full.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Most lots, except for the Second and, I think Second and Pine, there's only four lease spaces there. But some of the lots are actually a waiting list for.
Yep.
So those people are, a lot of those work downtown.
Yep.
And they want to have their own spaces.
Yep.
So just a few comments, but I think getting a balanced discussion of what different people are looking at. But as far as the dog grooming place, I think we've always tried to not tailor things for a specific business because that can change.
Yep. I understand that. Thank you.
Yeah, that was my point, too, is we don't want to design for what's there. We want to design.
Are we ready? Okay.
That's okay.
Sorry, I'm going to go ahead and, because otherwise we'll be on this topic all night long. So don't go anywhere, Nancy. Are you up for urban renewal?
Yes, I am.
Okay, stay there. So next, next on the line is urban renewal and tax increment financing overview.
I'm just going to help her get her.
Yep.
Move the marble forward.
Getting started.
I think it's a big step. I think it's a big step. I asked for a really big step that I didn't expect to get.
This presentation is at the request of city council. I think especially some of the newer members need some information about the urban renewal tax increment process. A lot of the, well, a number of the slides I've taken right from a Department of Management workshop that they had last fall. Actually, it was in Riverside. Carol went, Leanna McCullough from my office, Andrew Fangman was there. Seems like there was somebody else, but a number of city staff were there. And it was like five hours long. I will try not to make mine five hours long. I think, I think there's consensus.
For that, we're thankful.
The presentations themselves tonight have been averaging 15 minutes. The discussion may be longer.
I don't think you can talk about urban renewal in 15 minutes. I put a lot of information in the slides that people could refer back to. So it is informational and to meet council's goal of providing information to city council regarding the city's urban renewal plan. And then, as always, discussions welcome and questions as I go is fine, too. Urban renewal, it's a broad concept. It's a method for improving physical and economic conditions. And I think that's what the city has done with our urban renewal tax increment plans. Right from the urban renewal law, there's designations of slum, blight, and economic development. Slum, the definition is there, dangerous or unhealthy conditions dominate. Blight, substantially deteriorated or inadequate conditions inhibiting growth. And the city does have a designated blight area. And that was part of the urban renewal plan. And economic development is the kind of self-explanatory assistance to businesses and that type of thing. And then TIF is one of the tools to address the urban renewal plan goals. Urban renewal plan must be crafted and meet at least one of those designated goals. Slum, blight alleviation, economic development. The Planning and Zoning Commission must make sure the urban renewal plan or any plan amendments do not violate the city's master plan or comprehensive plan. City council is required to hold a public hearing on any plan or plan amendments. And then for specific projects, we're required to have a consultation meeting with the other taxing authorities, the county and the schools. And then if we're doing any public building improvements, then there's a public building feasibility analysis that has to be done. We haven't done that for a number of years, but we have done that in the past. Urban renewal plan amendments, it can add or remove territory from the boundary of the urban renewal area, add or remove projects for the urban renewal area. And any amendments that starts, that start TIF will have a new TIF sunset. Council, council's approval of the urban renewal plan makes it active and creates the opportunity for TIF to be used. And a TIF ordinance has to be passed to actually start TIFs in new TIF districts. This next slide, and I, there's a lot of history to urban renewal and TIF in the community. I've just highlighted some things. The city's first use of the urban renewal TIF law dates back to the 1970s and was in the downtown Muscatine area. One of the first projects incorporated one half of a downtown city block and the area's been modified numerous times since then. And that first project, and that was even before I started, it was, it was actually removing some dilapidating buildings and a new business was located, which was not an easy, or it wasn't an easy task to, for those building owners. In August of 94, the city created urban renewal area on the south end of the city. And that allowed both sewer and water service to be extended to that area. That area had been annexed, but they didn't have all the city services. And so with the extension of the utilities to the south end, there's been, we've had numerous development agreements with businesses locating or expanding in that area. And before the utilities were there, there was little expansion in that area. We did, the city did create several other urban renewal areas through the year 2010. And the south end and downtown were created before 1995, so those do not have official expiration dates. There's a lot of information on this slide, but in May of 2011, the city consolidated all of its urban renewal policies, plans, and initiatives under one urban renewal plan. So there was no longer an urban renewal plan for the downtown or south end or the other areas. And that was at the recommendation of our bond attorney. At that time, the legal description of the urban renewal area was expanded to the, all of the city, the city boundaries. And we since amended that a couple of times as there were voluntary annexations. The consolidated urban renewal plan reaffirmed the findings of a need for economic development and slum and blight alleviation with respect to various properties in the urban renewal area. So a restated and updated urban renewal plan was created. And I have attached a copy of that to the agenda material. A lot of that is broad statements about the goals. And then since then, and that consolidated plan also has a map, and I'm. And I'm not sure if, if any of this has changed since then, a map of the properties that were designated as blight. And there was some discussion back then, people don't like to think they live in a blight area. But there's benefits to be able to use these tools if, if we do designate blight. And it doesn't mean that every property is blight, but that blight exists in those areas. Since then, we've amended that plan for specific projects. And those of you that have been on the council for a number of years and have gone through the process, to get a new TIF agreement, we have to make sure that it's in the urban renewal plan. And there's a 14 urban renewal plan amendments, and I've also attached that behind the, behind your packet and also in the agenda material. And that kind of is just glancing through it, you can see the various development agreements that the city has amended the plan for. And those are more specific projects. Other things in there include the small business forgivable loan program, the use of TIF for administrative and legal costs. So all that has to be in the plan before we can use TIF for it. And so that, if you just, I'm not going to go through that list today, but you do have it. And it, and it helps recall just the, just what projects were assisted, that the city assisted with, with, with TIF. And then city staff. We work with developers on proposed projects, but we also, all of that to, to make sure it's legal is all reviewed by our bond attorney, because things have to be in, in conformity to state law. And just, I think Carol and I have both had this, just when we think we know everything, the attorneys know more than we do. And there's, there's some differences between urban renewal area, which is the whole city, and TIF districts. Urban renewal areas do not automatically sunset by, by state law. But TIF and TIF, TIF areas and TIF taxing districts may have statutory sunsets. So if it's an economic development TIF area, the maximum is 20 years after the first year. If it's residential economic development, 10 years after the first year. And there now is a possible five-year extension. We'd have to look at that before we would use that. But slum and blight, TIF areas are perpetual care, are, not perpetual care, that's cemetery. Perpetual, and they end when the TIF has achieved the, the goals. So if there's no longer blight in an area, that type of thing. I, I'm not sure that that will happen. I think there's always going to be other properties too that need improvement. And with the, getting projects in the urban renewal plan, by, especially by amendments, they must further the stated goals of the urban renewal plan. And again, the urban renewal plan basic document is generic statements on improvements that are desired. Some of the code examples are infrastructure, loans or grants, land or building acquisition and remodeling. To claim TIF for projects, the city must first create debt. And debt can be, and we can't certify projects unless there is debt. And the types of debt could be general obligation bonds, TIF revenue bonds, private loans, rebates and development agreements, forgivable loans and grants, and internal advances and loans. Rebates are the most common form of debt that the city has. But we do some internal advances, and generally those are done in the fall of each year to create debt in order to, to claim TIF for projects. Some of those, an example of that is the wayfinding project. We had to borrow money from other funds to do the project so we could have debt that we can repay with TIF. Just in general, rebate agreements, individually negotiated contracts with a business or individual, usually for an expansion causing a tax-based increase. And then the, a portion of the taxes paid by the, by the developer, the individual or business is returned to them as far as, as a rebate. But that is only for the increase in valuation that resulted from their project. So none of the current tax base is used for the rebates. It's all incremental. There's a lot of tracking and calculating on the rebates and annual reporting that finance staff does. They go for a set number of years and a set percentage up to the maximum amount of payments. And the city's basic TIF is a 10-year 50%. And I, I think you have seen the, all of you have seen the TIF policy that does allow the city to consider other, other arrangements. There can be other agreements other than development agreements, economic development grants or loans. They're largely the same as a rebate, contract between the, the city and the individual and business. And they usually set up payments rather than a percentage. An example of that was when the property at 500 Fifth and Mulberry, we gave it economic development grant to the individual that was, who agreed to improve that. That was, the sidewalk was blocked off around that establishment for quite a while. So the city can do grants and agreements for specific purposes. And those are set amount of payments, not a percentage. Annual appropriation. If it's approving debt once a year rather than in total. It can be used for any kind of debt, but primarily it's used for the rebate agreements. And for the rebate agreements, it's hard to know what the rebates will be at the start of a project because it's based on assessed valuation, tax rates and that type of thing. And then the rebates are certified yearly rather than all at once. And probably in November each year, we have quite a few that city council considers. And part of the reason we do that is if, if the whole amount of the debt was counted against the city's debt limit, it would, it would eat up a lot of our ability to borrow money for other things. And especially for development agreements, it's, you wouldn't want to be limited in that if somebody doesn't pay their taxes, they won't get it rebated. You know, so to have the whole amount maximum hanging out there. An example of that was there was one for the mall at one point with a large maximum, and that counted against our debt limit. And the increment never increased how, how they expected it to increase. The internal loans, and we've done this, they have to be passed by a resolution each year. You can't certify the debt unless there's a resolution. And I've got some city examples on a later slide. And then creating and using TIF revenue. And some of this is right from the Department of Management language. It's a mechanism to fund urban renewal projects. Repayment for the debt is a roundabout way to fund projects. So if we have a, a project that is eligible for TIF funding and, and it's logical and our plan provides for it, we can do that from TIF rather than regular property tax-supported debt. TIF revenue diverts a portion of the tax revenue from all the, all the taxing entities, the city, the county, the school. The TIF law provides that it's not the total tax rate. It's the total tax rate of all the taxing entities. And then you subtract out the debt service levies of each, each taxing entity. The school's physical plant and equipment levy, the school's instructional support levy. So the, an example, I've got the calculation down there for FY '24. The total in, in the Muscatine School District, and there's part of Muscatine that's in L and M, but for the Muscatine School District, $36.80 per 1,000 evaluation. If we take out the debt service and the two school levies, that subtracts out $5.73. So the incremental tax rate is actually $31.07. So that's, that's the rate that the increment is, the rebates are based on. Maximum TIF versus required TIF. The city could claim, as long as there's debt, 100% of the increment if, if there was a reason to. But especially for the rebates, if it's a 10-year 50%, we would only claim the 50% for the annual payments. The county auditor calculates the maximum TIF in each tax district, but they only give the city or other entities the, the amount that we can, that we request and, and that we have debt for. And then when we don't claim the whole amount, the rest goes back to regular valuations for both, for, for the city and the county and the school. And as far as managing that, how much you claim, we try to keep that consistent from year to year, so there's no spiking, having the taxable valuations go up one year and down the next year because of TIF. They may still do that, but, but we don't want it to be because of TIF. Because every dollar that's diverted to TIF, it impacts the city's general fund as well as the other taxing districts. Yeah, and we have not been, the city has not been claiming the maximum in any recent year on, on the incremental values. Low to moderate income set-aside requirements. And this is for market rate housing developments, except for those in a slum and blight area. The requirements are set out in Iowa code. And it applies when TIF revenue is spent on market rate housing residential economic development. And the percentage is based on the countywide LMI percentage. And for the city of Muscatine, that's 39.91%. So of the TIF that's claimed, 39.91% needs to be put in a low and moderate income reserve fund to be used for LMI projects. The only LMI project we have is Arbor Commons. That's the only one we've used TIF assistance for the infrastructure for that development. And this current year, I think it's FY '24, is the first year we will put any money in this LMI set-aside fund. And that set-aside fund can be used anywhere in the community for LMI projects. And I think our community development department has numerous ideas of how, how that money can be spent. And they'll be brought back to council before any decisions made. And then just, and this is all city staff's information from now on. In December of 2022, the council adopted a formal TIF tax increment financing policy. And that's helpful to evaluate, to determine if some of the requests are a good use of TIF. That policy includes the goals of the TIF program, TIF policies, TIF funding calculations and definitions, funding mechanism, the city standard TIF program, the 10-year 50%. Considerations if the, if the council wants to exceed that 10-year 50% and the TIF application process. But as noted previously, any projects being requested for TIF funding must be first included in the city's urban renewal plan as an urban renewal plan amendment. And, and some of these we do try to anticipate. And several things, like the merge development is already in the plan because we thought it was going to go forward before. So that's already in the plan. So that doesn't have to be adopted again. Any new projects can always be added by amendments that include public hearings, review by planning and zoning, and the required consultation meeting with the other taxing entities. Incremental taxes can also be used for public improvements in the urban renewal area. Economic development incentives for businesses, including TIF rebates. Economic development programs, which primarily for us are the small business forgivable loan program. So we do a variety of different things with the city's TIF. City currently has 15 active development agreements that provide rebates to developers and businesses. The TIF rebates are less risky than a direct grant since the incremental taxes are based on the increase in the valuation over the frozen base when the project first starts. It's not dipping into your, your current valuations. And so if the taxable valuations would not go up, there wouldn't be any rebates required. So that has less risk to the city for, for those rebates. And those rebates are listed in the city's budget in the debt service fund area. And as noted, it's not the full amount of the tax rate, not the $36.80, but that amount less the school levies and the debt service levies down to 36.80. but that amount less the school levies and the debt service levies down to 31. And that does vary from year to year. So we'll have the, as soon as they're done certifying the FY '25 tax levies, we'll have a new rate for the coming year. We have in the past issued tax increment or general obligation bonds to complete public improvements in the TIF area and have TIF fund the principal interest payments on those bonds. The one we have outstanding now is the May 2020 bond issue for $3,175,000. And that was for the Second Street Streetscaping Project. And that's being paid over 10 years. And the final payment will be in FY '29, 30. We, we have had other, other public improvement projects. And one of them was when we initially purchased the Hawkeye lumber site. That was a bond issue to, to purchase that site. It had frequently flooded and then we were using it for the dredge spoils. City also funds some ongoing and new programs. The annual TIF administrative, administration and professional support costs. The annual grant to the Chamber of Commerce and Industry. The funding of various small business forgivable loans, including the original program, the code compliance program, which we've discontinued and moved that to the regular program for the coming year. Second Street facade program, the small business forgivable loans during the COVID pandemic, $2,500 for each of the small businesses that applied. And then the Grandview Avenue forgivable loans with the construction there shortly following the pandemic. And then we're currently funding the city wayfinding project from, from TIF. And some of those are possible because the downtown and south end TIF do not have expiration dates. Generally, there's a 20-year expiration, but having those not be expiring lets us claim that incremental tax funds for those purposes. So in summary, I think the city has assisted numerous businesses with TIF funding through the rebate provisions of the development agreement. There are numerous successful, success stories that can be seen throughout the community. Just this week, Musco opened their new facility. There was a TIF development agreement for that. I know that council members Brockert and Lewis were down there. Carol and I were also down there. Very nice facility and I think it's serving its purpose of job requirements and that type of thing. So, and you can go down the list and go, that was a very good project and it accomplished what the intent was. City has also assisted small businesses for the very, through the small business forgivable loan program. We've completed various projects, public improvements with TIF, Second Street Wayfinding. And all those projects and programs are directly tied to the urban renewal plan goals of economic development and slumming by blight alleviation. And this last comment is the, even though there's some substantial rebates to some of these businesses, the question has to be, but for TIF, would they have happened in the first place? And, and I think a lot of them would not have happened without that, that funding assistance. So the appropriate use of TIF is important. And it has resulted in a lot of improvements through the years. And as I said before, the, I've included the urban renewal plan from the consolidated plan and then a summary of each of the amendments since that time, basically. But I think it'll ring some bells as far as remembering, oh, I forgot we did that project with TIF. And there's some, been some very good things for the community funded from, from this program. Any questions?
Thank you Nancy. Any questions from council?
Thanks for all the great information tonight, but I know we'll always have questions on TIF every time TIF comes up. So we appreciate your expertise in this, I feel, because it keeps us on track and out of trouble too. But thanks again Nancy for covering all of us.
And we will, every time we have a project that comes out, you'll see multiple documents until it's all approved.
Anyone else?
One quick one.
Absolutely.
Nancy, what's the difference between tax abatements and tax rebates and TIF? Is there a difference between that term or is it just another term?
Tax abatements are in specific areas and they're, it's a state code provision as well. A lot of times it's for smaller projects than a TIF would be. But it basically, people don't, and Andrew's probably more of the expert on this than I am. But they're, depending on the type of agreement, it might have a declining percentage, like 100% in the first year, 75, and then down a shorter period of time.
They don't pay taxes at all and sign a rebate that comes back.
On the increment.
Well, on the incremental.
On the amount of the improvement.
Okay.
Councilmember Osborne.
I think, I think one of the ideas I get about TIFs that's easy to potentially miss, and I'd like to bounce it off you to see if there's an act or simplistic, something that I can understand way of introducing TIFs when I get asked about them. But I think one of the things that can be forgotten is, let's say you take a property that the city owns today and we're not getting any money for that. We're not getting any taxes for that. We're actually mowing it, we're, you know, caring for it. It costs us money to own that property. And then, you know, we have a developer come along, we sell it to them at a price. And then we talk about, we funded it through TIF, which sounds to the layman and me like we actually gave them money to, you know, we helped them fund it. But the point is, is soon as they start owning the property, they start paying taxes on it that we're not already getting. We are, and we stopped mowing it and taking care of it. And in addition to that, you know, we say the value after the property is built is going to be X million dollars. And so the taxes would be, or is this amount. But we're, we are choosing not to take as much as of that. You know, we start out with a certain percentage of it at first. So at the end of the day, as soon as they take possession of the property, the city is getting a benefit in taxes that we would not have had the TIF not happen.
Some of these general questions, if we're talking about the merged land?
Well, just any of them in general. Yeah, merge would be a good example. Let's talk that one.
Yeah, that one, the proposal is to actually sell that property to them on the condition that they build. And then there is a provision for, for the rebate to the developer. But that's because of the, their plans for the project.
On the day that they take position, do they start paying taxes in the first year on that, on the grass? Before they open up a shovel?
There's a lag in the city, in the state's property tax system. So when it's, they will start paying taxes when it's in their name, the January 1st after, after that. But that, so if it was done in 2024, it would be in their name, 1125. And the first taxes they would pay would be in '26, '27.
Right.
Yeah, so it's a lag.
There's a one-year lag. And if I, and if I was a property owner already and I got a TIF, you know, kind of like Musco or some of those others, I'm already paying taxes. We didn't reduce our taxes at all. And so my point is, is sometimes it sounds like we're using taxpayer money to fund this, but really it's a deferred tax on something that wouldn't have existed if it didn't happen.
Would most likely not have happened, yes.
Right, right. So, but the, you know, the point is, is, you know, like in Carver Corner's case, where that, that costs us money until it transfers to an owner who starts paying taxes almost, you know, within reason, there's a one-year lag on everything, you know?
Right. And the, I think all of this has to be looked at long-term.
Yes.
And even, and without, I mean, I kind of said it, but I think there was a question from somebody before. With this TIF law, we can use the total city, county in taxes for, for this assistance, less the debt service and school levies to make these improvements occur. So it's not just the city's, the city's levy, it's the total less those specific levies. And that's why the consultation meeting is required. So they're aware of what we're doing. But it's, but I think probably all the entities know the value of the long-term investments if they're creating jobs, improving the conditions of the city and that type of thing.
Yep, absolutely. There's always, there's a tremendous long-term benefit. But even in the, even in the short term, we're getting better. We're, we're increasing the tax, but tax base almost immediately. With, as far as the speed of light that city moves at, you know, a year is a pretty, pretty fast.
Thanks for all you do Nancy. That's all I can say. This is a lot to have to go through. And it's like, I know it took me a couple of years to get my head wrapped around it, being a new council member. And I still only have just the surface of what having a TIF will do and benefit. So thank you for all your explanation. It is very helpful.
Yes, I agree. Well done.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Gendrich, do you have anything to share tonight?
No, I do not, Mayor Protem Lewis. Thank you.
Councilmember Brockert?
I do. I was going down Mississippi Drive this morning about 10:30 and just sort of minding my own business and keeping an eye on what was going on in front of me. And I noticed a fellow who looked like he was old enough to know better blow through the stop sign at Sycamore on his bicycle and then go up the block and then turn and go across the tracks to the bike trail. We have enough heartbroken families around here after the last week or so. We don't need anymore, so please, please, think before you run stop signs, speed or anything else that could result in injury or worse.
Councilmember Conard?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. First, congratulations to the Kiwanis of Muscatine for celebrating their 100 years. There are not a lot of service organizations anymore. Nadine's part of one, the Lions, Kiwanis Rotary, but they're out celebrating and I want to congratulate them for being steadfast and helping us. And then just second, with the heat and everything, please check on your neighbors, check on your seniors. Make sure all the pets are watered and cool. Just be careful with this heat. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Osborne?
Just another plug for the farmer's market in downtown. Get there in the morning, have a nice, stop at a coffee shop on your way there and stay for lunch and enjoy the river and all of the downtown has to offer.
Councilmember Lampy?
Just restating the fact that the riverboat will be here on Monday morning. So invite the community to come down and experience that and share in the ribbon cutting for the new boat tours on Monday morning about 8:45, I believe is the time. All right?
Yep.
Okay, that's it.
Cindy, would you have anything? City Administrator?
I have a couple of things. Just kind of a keep it in your eye, or keep it in your mind. I've had a couple council members ask me if we would consider moving our start time up to either 5:00 or 5:30. So just something for council to be thinking about. That way we could actually have our evenings free. The other thing I just want to mention is to give a shout out to Coffee Belt. I actually had coffee out at Calvary Baptist Church, or Calvary, it's not Baptist, it's Calvary, Calvary Church. They actually have a Coffee Belt, Coffee Shop there now. It's wonderful, it's big, it's open. It was a great place to go and have a discussion, so just be aware of that. That is all I have tonight. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you.